Gathered on the ancestral lands of our Lake County tribes. We remain mindful of the history, culture, and continued presence of indigenous peoples in our community. And thank you for joining us today for our Lake County Behavioral Health Fiscal Year 2526 Annual Update. I'm truly excited for what lies ahead. The past year and a half has been one of remarkable and exponential growth. From the successful launch of our mobile crisis response unit, to the open of Palisades Place, which now provides safe, supportive housing for 20 behavioral health consumers, 10 regional center clients, and 10 well-income families. We are seeing real impactful progress. We continue to make strides in the stigmatizing mental health and substance use treatment here in Lake County. This is work that matters, and we're doing this together. Our new director, Elise, has hit the ground running, empowered by an incredible and dedicated team. Their collective energy and commitment have made this year's achievements possible. As I said, our fiscal year 2425 was a year of exponential growth. And I have every confidence that this year 2526 will bring even greater progress. And now, I'll turn this over to Scott.
Hey, thank you, Stacy. Appreciate that. Welcome to our public hearing hosted by our Behavioral Health Advisory Board, Stacy, the Chair.
We don't have, we're not getting audio at the moment. Let me see.
Hopefully they'll get their audio working soon. Again, welcome, everyone. That was Stacy, our Behavioral Health Advisory Board Chair. And this is actually hosted by the Behavioral Health Advisory Board as per regulation. And we are at the, almost the final point of our annual update plan. And so we appreciate you being here. This has been, you know, a six-month process to get to this point of updating our plan, starting with, you know, working on our community assessment, needs assessment with the surveys and community meetings, taking the feedback that you've provided and integrating it into our annual plan. Significantly, this is the last year of our, of this particular three-year plan, an MHSA plan, Mental Health Services Act Plan. Proposition 1 passed last year, and so we'll be moving into Behavioral Health Services Act and a new three-year plan next year, which would be all-encompassing of the entire department. And so this particular plan is the last year of our MHSA and the MHSA programs which exist underneath it. So hopefully you'll, you'll learn something today. You'll be able to provide some feedback. This is the last stop before it is presented to the Board of Supervisors for final approval. And what we have with us today is Jamie and Paulina from RDA, who are consultants who help us, and they will be guiding a good portion of this presentation today. And so I'm going to turn the time over to them.
Thank you so much, Scott, and thank you Stacy for that wonderful welcome. We're really excited to be here today and to talk through the annual update, some updates coming up for next year, and going over more of the Behavioral Services Act, as well as having time for public comments. So we're going to jump right in.
Do you want your earphones in, or do you want me to turn it off a little bit?
All right, so we really want to know who's in the room, and so we want to ask folks to put their name, pronouns, and program in the chat if you're able. If you aren't affiliated with the program, you can put your role or where you're calling from. We have a lot of people joining today, so it's really difficult for us to do individual introductions, unfortunately. But we would love to just hear where everyone's calling from and who's in the room. If you're new to Teams, feel free to go up to the top bar and you'll see a chat button, and that's where you can type in your chats. And if you are at a peer support center right now in person, we would love to know who's here. So I think it would be great if the peer support centers, if you're able to come off mute and say hello and let everyone know how many people are joining you today. I think I see Circle of Native Minds. Whoever would like to, feel free to come off mute and say hello.
Hi. We've got about eight people here at Circle.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any other centers would like to say hello?
Hello from Lake County Behavioral Health. I'm at South Shore today.
Hello, hello.
Hey, we're, we're over here from the Harbor Youth Research Center with five staff and one community member.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining. Right. And I'm seeing a lot of people in the chat. Really great. Good morning, Kimberly. We have John, Christine, Alicia, Denise, Elise, Kathleen, Julia. Hello, everyone. We're really excited that you're all here today and joining us. Feel free, keep putting introductions in the chat. And lastly, Scott already introduced us a bit, but my name is Paulina Hatfield, and I'm a consultant with RDA Consulting, and my colleague Jamie Dorsey and I are working with Lake County Behavioral Health on their 2526 Annual Update. And we've been working with Lake County Behavioral Health for the past few years, including last year's annual update and the last three-year plan for 2023 to 2026. So we're really excited to continue working with you all and getting to be a part of this process. All right, gonna quickly go through our agenda. I also didn't realize that each bullet point is coming up separately. But today, we're going to be starting off with a training and education portion on the Mental Health Services Act. We're going to give background on what is the Mental Health Services Act, and we're also going to explain the annual update as well as the community planning process. Then we're going to go into a short overview of the Behavioral Health Services Act and leave some room for questions. Next, we're going to go over our key findings from our needs assessment that we started back in January. We actually went through these findings at our last community meeting in March, but we're going to go over them again as a refresher and for anyone who wasn't able to join us at our last meeting. And then I'm going to pass it over to Scott to go over some of the program modifications for fiscal year 2526, as well as the program budget request as well. And then at the very end, we'll have ample time to have public comment and discussion. So our objectives today are to present the proposed MHSA Annual Update, developed with community input, and also provide opportunity for partners to provide public comment. All right, before diving into the training and education portion of today, we wanted to give some quick tips on how you can fully engage in today's meeting, with today being a hybrid meeting. So we have people in person at the centers as well as people that are online, and we may have people also calling in via phone. So for those that are in person, there will be a coordinator at your site to manage the meeting, to come off mute, ask questions. But for those that are joining virtually, it's best if able to find a quiet, distraction-free location with a strong internet connection. However, I know that this isn't always possible, and that's okay. Please let Jamie, or myself, or Patty, or Scott know if there's anything that we can do to assist you with any technology needs. We can do so in the chat. We also ask that we save any substantial comments, questions, or feedback until the public comment period at the end of this meeting. But of course, if you have any clarifying questions, feel free to raise your hand or enter questions in the chat as we go. If you're in person and have a question, feel free to physically raise your hand and let your onsite coordinator know that you have a question, and then they can let us know by raising their virtual hand or entering the question into the chat. All right, and then this is our last slide, I promise, on just logistics. So here are some ways that you can contribute to the discussion, because it's a little bit different for those that are in person versus online versus over the phone. So for those online, you can raise your hand by selecting the raise icon at the top of your screen, and you can press the mic icon when you're ready to speak. If you're calling via phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star five, and you can unmute by pressing star six. And for those that are online, you can use the chat. The chat is above in that top bar, and you can press the chat button and then type your comment into the box. And of course, if you have any comments that you don't want to share during the meeting, or you would prefer to save for another time, you can email them to Scott Abbott via email, and his email is on the screen. And even when I move from the screen, you can ask for his email over chat, and we will find a way to have your comment heard. All right. We're going to dive into the training and education portion of today, but I wanted to pause. Are there any questions on logistics or how to participate today, or any way that we can support anyone's participation? All right. Okay, we're going to dive in. All right. Okay. All right, so MHSA is the Mental Health Services Act, and this was originally Proposition 63, which passed on November 2nd, 2004. It's a 1% tax on income over $1 million, and that's meant to expand and transform mental health services. MHSA is a predominant funding source for many counties when it comes to mental health services, and it's guided by five core values that you can see on the screen. So we have a focus on wellness recovery and resiliency, and then cultural competence, so being aware of and respecting the cultural needs of clients and their families. Next, in the middle, we have consumer and family-driven services. And this means that MHSA prioritizes the needs of consumers and their families when providing services. Next, on the bottom level, to the left, we have integrated service experiences. And that is providing integrated services for clients and their families to ensure that services are not siloed, but are coordinated. And lastly, we have community collaboration. The Mental Health Services Act and the community planning process and everything that is involved is really focused on working with the community to share information and resources in order to fulfill a shared vision and goals. And today, we're really living that out, that community collaboration. So the Mental Health Services Act funding is earmarked for five funding buckets, and this is also called components. Most programs are funded under one of these MHSA funding program components. And we're going to start at the very top. So we first have Community Services and Supports, or CSS. And these services include outreach and direct services for serious mental illness for people of all ages. And half of CSS funding actually goes towards full-service partnership programs. Next, we have Prevention and Early Intervention, or PEI. PEI is focused on preventing the development of mental health problems and screening for and intervening when there are early signs of mental health challenges. And half of PEI funding goes specifically towards children and youth services. Next, we have Innovation, or INN. Innovation, that funding is used to test new approaches and programs that may improve outcomes. So these are new innovative projects that a county may want to implement to improve mental health outcomes of their community. In the gray, we have Workforce Education and Training, or WET. And this is a funding bucket that is focused on building, retaining, and training a public mental health workforce. And lastly, we have Capital Facilities and Technology Needs, or CFTN. And this is funding dedicated to infrastructure needs. So an example of this would be implementing an electronic health record or building mental health facilities. So for Lake County, here's a list of all of the MHSA-funded programs under each category for this past fiscal year, fiscal year 2425. And I'm not going to read through all of these, but maybe just a couple of them. And if you want to, you can actually read about all of these programs in our annual update report. So you could see under Community Services and Supports, we have Crisis Access, we have Full Service Partnerships, Trauma-Focused Co-Occuring Disorder Screening and Treatment, Native American Peer Counseling. Under Prevention and Early Intervention, we have Older Adult Outreach and Prevention, Outreach and Engagement, Mental Health First Aid, Prevention Mini Grant, and many more. During fiscal year 2425, there were no innovation projects during that period. For Capital Facilities and Technology Needs, there was an electronic health record project. And for WET, there are a lot of different initiatives happening to build the mental health workforce in the county. And you can see that there are some programs that are funded by multiple categories, such as both VSS and PEI funding. So some are blended, blended buckets of funding. All right, and in addition to the annual update, you can also learn more about programs by visiting the Lake County Behavioral Health MHSA webpage. I think my colleague is going to be dropping that into the chat. Feel free to visit, peruse, and learn more about these amazing programs. All right, so we just went through what is the Mental Health Services Act, and we talked about what the different funding components are. But now we're going to dive very specifically into the annual update, what that is, and what the community planning process is, which is what we're currently all a part of right now. So the purpose of the annual update is to provide updates to the adopted three-year plan that happened in fiscal year 2020, or for fiscal year 2023 to 2026. And this includes just sharing the program's status and service accomplishments in the past fiscal year, and then also any changes for the next fiscal year based on the needs assessment and stakeholder input. So the Mental Health Services Act. Are there, so, any questions I may be missing? All right, go. So the MHSA intends that there be a meaningful community planning process to provide that subject matter expertise to the development of plans focused on utilizing MHSA funding at the local level. And so I can tell today that we have providers, we have clients, we have family members joining us today. And I want you all to know that you are the subject matter experts. You all know services better than anyone, because you provide services and receive services. And that's why Lake County Behavioral Health really prioritizes and values the community planning process. Additionally, in fiscal year 1819, the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, or the MHSOAC, updated PEI reporting requirements to include evaluation of PEI programs in addition to the annual update. So there is a PEI annual report that reports on consumers, their demographics, and program accomplishments. And there are also different PEI service areas that we're not going to go into today, but each of those have different reporting requirements. And so there is also a PEI three-year plan that reports on the same metrics, but over the past three years, and that's the case this year. So with our annual update, we included a three-year PEI evaluation report that you all can review. And Lake County has actually been working with all programs to strengthen data collection and specifically strengthen PEI reporting as well. So if you would like to take a look at that PEI three-year report, feel free to take a look at our annual update, and it'll be in there for you to review. All right, most importantly, all MHSA planning must include community involvement, which is why we have this community planning process. And this really includes anybody who touches the mental health system. And you can see on the screen, this is not an exhaustive list, but we hope to engage these groups in the planning process and have their voice be heard. So this includes adults and seniors with severe mental illness. We want to hear from family members. We want to hear from providers, law enforcement agencies, education agencies, social services agencies, et cetera. So not an exhaustive list, but we want to hear from a variety of partners so that we can have different perspectives, different needs being raised and brought to the table. We also want to point out that everyone in this room has a role to play in MHSA planning efforts. So on this, on this slide, we have some of the big groups and their responsibilities, or what we're really hoping would be their responsibility in this process. So for community members, we really hope to present individual perspectives and lived experience in this process. We would love for community members to share reflections on emerging strategies that can help meet the community's needs. And, and that has been a part of our process since January, through our survey, through the community meetings, breakout discussions. It's been very rich in discussion, and it's been an honor to have community members a part of this process so far. For the Behavioral Health Services Department, their responsibility in this planning process is to develop the annual update. The Mental Health Advisory Board is also involved by assuring that there is community involvement. They also are responsible for reviewing and advising on the annual update, and also conducting the public hearing, which we're doing today, as this meeting is hosted by the board. The Board of Supervisors is responsible for reviewing and approving the annual update. And then RDA Consulting, which is myself and Jamie, our responsibility is to collect and present findings on the current system, offer recommendations, facilitate discussion, and compile all of this information for the annual update. So we all have a role to play, and everyone has a seat at the table. Lastly, I know this is a long section. Lastly, here's a breakdown of all of the planning activities that we've had all the way until now. So back in December, we started planning for this process. And then in January through March, we actually started conducting community meetings, gathering community input through our community survey, and also working with programs to collect data. March through April, we synthesized all that data, and we reported all of those key findings to you all at our second community meeting in March. And now we're at the last phase, which I can't believe that Scott said it's been, it's been an amazing journey since last fall. Now we have developed the annual update. We posted it for public comment, I believe at the beginning of May. And now we are having the public hearing, compiling all those public comments. And with those comments and feedback from the community, we're going to update and finalize the annual update. And Lake County Behavioral Health is going to present it to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And with that, that ends our education and training on the Mental Health Services Act. And we're going to be running a community poll, which I think Patty will be launching in just a few moments. If you can complete the poll, this would be so helpful. I think it should be on, here we go, I see it now. So you should have received, if you're online, a poll just pop up on your screen. If you can indicate your feelings of how you feel your understanding is of the Mental Health Services Act after this training, that would be wonderful. If you're in person at a peer support center, please raise your hand if you agree with the statement. And your facilitator onsite will note down the number of respondents. Thank you so much.
The rationale for this poll is kind of funny. We asked this kind of funny question right here, because the state wants evidence that education on MHSA was provided. And so we use this poll as evidence to show that we just gave this presentation.
Exactly. Thank you, Scott. All right, I see. I think we have about 15 responses. We'll just give it a couple more moments. Thank you so much for participating. I know it seems we do this same poll each time, but as Scott said, this is just a way for us to show the state that we are providing training, because education of MHSA facilitates more engagement, and we just want to make sure that everyone feels informed. All right, we're up to 18 responses. Give maybe 30 more seconds for the poll, and then we're going to move forward. So if you haven't yet answered the poll, we would greatly appreciate your participation in it. And we also want to open up this time. If anyone has any specific questions on the Mental Health Services Act, please feel free to come off mute or send your questions in the chat. All right, I think we're going to move forward, and I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Jamie to kick off the Behavioral Health Services Act overview.
Great, thanks, Paulina. So in this next section, we're going to talk a little bit about BHSA or Prop 1, which Scott was mentioning. We can go to the next slide. Go ahead.
Just want to real mention real quick. The reason we want to talk about this is just to kind of give the community, give you an idea of where we'll be going. This is, you know, I mean, this public hearing is primarily to be discussing the current annual update. But we also want to do ongoing training for you and help the community understand what, you know, what happens after this, this particular update as we move into BHSA.
Great, thank you, Scott. So yeah, as Scott mentioned, this is the last year technically of MHSA and this kind of MHSA process, and it will be changing kind of as of the next fiscal year. So Proposition 1 was passed in March 2024, and it was intended to modernize MHSA. MHSA, as Paulina mentioned, was passed in 2004, and there were feelings that MHSA wasn't necessarily serving the community as anticipated and needed to be modernized. In particular, in kind of like expanding housing and treatment options for those with serious mental illness. So it was passed in 2020, in March 2024. There are two key components. The first, we won't spend as much time on, but it's this Behavioral Health Infrastructure Bond Act. And what this does is it authorizes about $6.5 billion to build inpatient and residential treatment, as well as permanent supportive housing. About $4.5 billion of that is earmarked for inpatient and residential treatment beds, and then about $2 billion is earmarked for permanent supportive housing, including $1 billion specifically for veterans. So there's a process for kind of getting those funds, but that's one part of it, is increasing that funding. The other part is the Behavioral Health Services Act. So Proposition 1 kind of amends the Mental Health Services Act, and now it'll be the Behavioral Health Services Act. and now it'll be the Behavioral Health Services Act. One of the reasons for this change is because the Behavioral Health Services Act is expanding services to include substance use treatment. So the Mental Health Services Act mostly focused on mental health, but now it's going to be expanding to substance use as well. So it's, the name is reflecting that change to kind of all behavioral health services. The other big change is kind of revising the distribution of funding to prioritize housing. And we'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. But the amount of money isn't changing, but just the way that the funding is kind of being prioritized and allocated will change. And then the last kind of key pieces are that it's also changing. It's expanding some oversight and accountability measures. So the, the plan is going to look a little bit different. One of the big changes is that because there's now this kind of integration of mental health and behavioral health services, there's going to be an integrated plan. And rather than just focusing on services that are funded by MHSA funding, which is a part of the way that county behavioral health departments provide services, but it's not the only funding source. So moving forward, this BHSA integrated plan is going to focus on kind of all services and programs that are provided through the county behavioral health departments. So that's also a big shift. Okay, so this next slide has a lot of information on it and we'll kind of walk through. But this top row is the current allocation of funding over, under MHSA. So this blue pie chart on the left is kind of, when you think about all of the MHSA funding that is available to, throughout the state, 95% of that goes to the counties and 5% goes to the state for kind of like oversight and any state initiatives. Under BHSA, that's going to change a little bit. So if we look at this bottom blue pie chart, now instead of 95% of money of funding going to the counties, only 90% is going to go to the counties. So a little bit less of the kind of total pie is going to the counties to use. More money is going to go to the state. So 3% of this will be for administration. 3% of this will be for workforce initiatives that the state is taking over. And then the state is also implementing some prevention initiatives and programs. So 4% will be going to that. So key point from that is that there's a little bit less of the, the total pie that's going to counties. On the right, we have these bar charts. So again, this kind of top column or top bar is the current MHSA allocation. So Paulina kind of went through this, but we'll just give a little refresher. So there's, there's a few key funding buckets. Most of the funding is going to community services and supports, 76%. Half of that, so 40, 40, almost 40% of the total kind of, kind of MHSA pie goes towards FSP. And 37% is going to other community services and supports. So things like the Crisis Access Continuum, things like the, the parent partner support and some of the outreach and outreach programs. About 20% goes to these prevention and early intervention programs. Half of that needs to go towards youth programs geared towards youth and children under the ages of 25. And the other 9% or the other half of that can go towards any other prevention initiatives. And then there's also this 5% for innovation projects, where the county can use a little bit of dedicated funding to try out something new and kind of test out innovative, innovative approaches to programs. So this is going to change. So these errors are kind of pointing down to how it's going to change. For the most part, the amount that's dedicated to FSP, these full service partnerships, isn't really changing. Before it was 39% of the pot, now it's going to be 35%. So a little bit less, but similar. One of the big changes is kind of all of the rest of the MHSA funding. So this other half of community services and supports, the PEI, the innovation, that right now that makes up about 60% of kind of what counties can use, that's going to be cut down to 35%. And it's now, all of that is now going to be combined in this new kind of funding category that's called Behavioral Health Services and Supports. So this includes kind of the, the non-FSP community services and supports, prevention and early intervention, and innovation is all now in this kind of bucket going from 60% to 35%. This also needs to be allocated with about 10% going towards early intervention for children and youth under the age of 25, about 10% going towards other early intervention initiatives. And then the 17% can be used towards any other behavioral health services and supports. The remaining of the funding, and this is a big change, is that 30% would potentially be allocated to housing initiatives for folks experiencing serious mental illness. So 15% of that, so half of this kind of housing bucket, would go towards folks that are experiencing chronic homelessness. And then the other 15% would go towards other housing initiatives. And I'm just going to read Elise's comments here. It should be noted that the state has no accountability for the funds they retain. They're not required to report on how they use the money or any outcomes associated with this funding. And just to put that in a dollar amount, that looks like about 141.7 million that has no reporting requirements. That's how the law is now written. So thank you for that, Elise. So.
I also just want to maybe talk about the next slide, I forgot. But you're just looking at that, that graph right there, which I really, I really like this particular graph that RDA created for us. I think, you know, the biggest takeaway, I mean, make no mistake that when she talks about 60% being reduced to 35%, that's going to require a cut in services.
I want to be, Scott, I'm sorry to jump in, but I want to be very specific about what is on the chopping block. So what's on the chopping block? If we have the opportunity to exempt from this housing allocation. And I want to say a little bit about our commitment to housing. We pay as a department around $20,000 to $30,000 a month in people's rents or hotel stays or whatever that is. That already comes out of our full service partnership and some general, general service delivery MHSA funds. The main ceiling that we have for paying for housing is that there is not enough housing that will accept our people. Even the Collier Avenue Permanent Supportive Housing Project has requirements that preclude, preclude a lot of our people from being there, such as if you have eviction. So nothing is perfect, right? So we actually have had unspent funds year after year related to housing because there's not enough housing. So we would be in a position where we're getting more money to dedicate to housing, but we don't have additional housing resources to spend it on. What is on the chopping block is the MOTHERWISE program. I know they have many different funding streams. However, I believe that MHSA prevention and early intervention dollars are one of their largest funding streams. So in the absence of an ability, ability to secure additional funding, that program may go away. All of our peer support centers are heavily funded by PEI. Those may have to go away. Conocti Senior Supports funded by PEI, that may have to go away. We have not been able to identify other funding sources that can sufficiently backfill the absence of PEI funding for those programs.
Thanks, Elise and Scott. And so Paulina, can you go to the next slide?
We, we will be talking about this more due to this upcoming year as we, as we, again, we will be doing community-wide planning for this. We plan to start earlier this year because of this transition. So that, and one of the first things that we'll have to tackle is, is, there, one of the things we'll have to tackle is, is whether we will be applying for that exemption or not.
And I'll just jump in because I don't know if we've introduced that. So if you don't know what we're talking about when we say that this might be on the chopping block. So there is a possibility for how, for an exemption from this 30% allocation to housing. So small counties with a population under 200,000 people that meet specific criteria, they're going to be looking at things like your unhoused population, existing community resources, things like that. So small counties, which we think that Lake kind of potentially meets this criteria, they can request to opt out of this 30% housing intervention, which would basically keep the funding kind of similar to how it is now. So, you know, still 65% going to all of those like community services and supports, PEI programs that Elise and Scott were talking about. So what Scott is talking about is that one of the things that we're doing is folks were at the second community meeting. We're starting to gather input from community members to give some, to give your perspective about whether or not you think that Lake County should go for this housing exemption, which would allow the funding to stay the way it is and continue providing support to like the, that breadth of community services and, and supports and PEI programs. Or go for, or say no, I actually think that we should be giving that money to housing. So we've started this process. We did a poll at the last community meeting. We're not going to do that this time because we do want to keep this a little bit more focused on the existing annual update. But throughout the rest of the summer and the fall, we're going to have a lot more opportunities for your input, for community engagement, of which this will be a big part of it to kind of understand from your perspective, like what the county should be doing. Scott and Elise, do you have anything else that you want to add there?
No, I think it's pretty good.
Yeah, I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
There's a, there's a question there. So hypothetically, what is considered housing intervention versus FSP? That's a good question. And I also like to take the, the opportunity to kind of talk about, a little bit about housing and behavioral health services. As Elise mentioned, currently we fund a lot of housing to our full service partnership, which includes transitional type of housing, which we currently are employing motel stays around the county, and also rental assistance, which we also do all around the county for, for folks that meet that criteria for full service partnership. We also provide assistance through what's called the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Grant, which is other funding that we've received to help with, assist with, with housing for people that don't necessarily meet the full service partnership criteria. And then really significantly, we are the administrative entity for the Lake County Housing or Lake County Continuum of Care, which addresses homelessness in Lake County. So our department is extremely dedicated to, to housing, particularly housing the homeless. And so we think we have a, a pretty good idea, you know, around housing and what, what is needed and what, what we can do, do for it. We're extremely familiar with the housing in our county as a result, recognizing that it's, it's an ongoing issue. And, but we are currently addressing it very, very strongly.
Scott, there is another question in there about when does this decision need to be made? Do you want to take that one?
Sure. When we do, when BHSA does, when it, you know, when we start moving into BHSA, there's going to be some, some changes just beyond that 30% housing. One of those changes is we have to do a rough draft of our, of our plan. We get to the state before, right now, we just give them a final, the final plan. But they want a rough draft and then around that rough draft, which is around next March, they're going to want an application if we're going to opt in or, or not at that time.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, and then so moving on to the timeline. So kind of throughout 2025, like throughout this entire year and continuing throughout the rest of this year, the state has kind of been releasing different modules and guidance around BHSA and what the integrated plan needs to look like and kind of working out these final details. So that's been happening and will continue happening throughout this year. As we've mentioned a couple of times, like the planning process for this, this first BHSA three-year plan will start next fiscal year, so that means July. And that will kind of continue, like Scott said, there's a draft plan that's due in March. So a lot of the planning will be bumped up. If you've participated in this process, it'll be more in like the summer and the fall, whereas kind of in the past, it's been a little bit more like from January to March and April. The final plan is still due by the end of June. So June 2026 will be when the county kind of submits the, the first plan to the County Board of Supervisors and hopefully it's approved. And then July 1st, 2026 is when that kind of new plan would actually be implemented and active. And just want to read another comment of working with the older population. I have most of my referrals from our peer centers. Very concerning if our peer center were to be lost. I think a lot of us feel that way. And then this is some BHSA resources. So if you want to learn more, there's some information that's kind of been put out by the state just around, there's a lot of different resources on their Behavioral Health Transformation webpage. There's also information, like Lake County has some information and links to resources on their own website. The DCHS has also been conducting listening sessions with like the community throughout the year. And those listening sessions are also available if you want to learn more, kind of hear what folks were saying. If you're really interested, there's also the policy manual of kind of what's already been out. And if you're really interested in the legislation, here's also some links to the actual like BHSA legislation.
Indeed, these slides are, are posted on, on our website. So if you wanted to go on there and look up this slide and these, if you have the slide, the real slide, not the presented slide like this, but the real slide, you can just click on it and it will take you to those links.
Right. Any other questions before we kind of transition back into MHSA and the community needs assessment findings from this year? Okay, feel free to drop things in the chat. And then we will also have public comment at the end of this that you can also ask additional questions. All right, so then moving into the community needs assessment. So every year, we do a community needs assessment to kind of understand the strengths of the system, understand opportunities for improvement and some of the barriers and kind of what can be done. So as part of this needs assessment, there are a few different ways that we gather information. So one is a community survey, which we had launched from about the middle of January until the end of February. And we had 49 folks complete that survey. And that survey was, it was about 14 Likert scale questions that asked people to rate various statements about the system from strongly agree to strongly disagree, as well as some open-ended questions. During our two community meetings, the one for, the first one was in January and the second one was in March, we also had some breakout group discussion where we also asked folks to kind of share strength of the system, any gaps. And then also asked folks during the second community meeting to kind of like react to the preliminary findings that we shared and see if there was anything to add. So we also used information from those discussions to inform the needs assessment. So in total, we had 164 folks that participated. On the right, we have a graph that's showing kind of the state, the, who the folks were who participated. So about a third were behavioral health providers. Another third were kind of community members. And another third, or about 26% were folks who are participating in behavioral health services or the family member, loved one. We did have a fairly high percentage of folks who didn't, didn't report their affiliation. And I just want to put in another plug for the demographic survey. That is actually how we understand who kind of is participating in these things and how we're getting input. So it is really important to us that you complete that demographic form because it lets us kind of understand like who's participating in these needs assessments and making sure that we're, we're getting kind of like different perspectives and talking to all the variety of community members. All right, so then moving on to the next slide. So this is some of the key findings from the community survey based on those kind of Likert scale questions. The questions were broken down into three kind of domains of the services that were provided, access to services, and then experience with services. So just at a very high level, and there's more information, like if you really want the details of these findings, those are available in the annual update report that's posted online. But at a high level, the perceptions about whether Lake County's behavioral health services were meeting the community's needs were a little bit mixed. So overall, like most respondents felt that peer support services are great and are really meeting the needs of the community. About 71% felt like they felt like this was very true. Whereas it was a little bit more mixed for prevention and early intervention, where only about 40% of folks felt like it. Where only about forty percent of folks felt like it was true that the prevention and early intervention services were meeting the needs of the community before they developed serious mental illness. So an area for improvement in prevention and early intervention. With access to L C B H S services, one of the things that we found was that most people really knew how to access behavioral health services. They knew how to get in touch and kind of get an appointment. But um, most folks felt like it wasn't, it was difficult to get an appointment, get an appointment. And one of the things that we heard at least from this part of the survey was that part of that was around like the convenience of times, the the. The um, timing of appointments could be challenging or even the location of appointments. We'll dig into that a little bit more when we get into the qualitative findings. And then lastly, um, the experience with surveys was with L C V H S services was asking kind of questions about whether. Folks um, felt like services were welcoming, if they felt like people were getting better and experiencing good outcomes, if it was culturally responsive. Responsive and overwhelming. People had really positive experiences with L C B H S services and did feel like they were welcoming, felt like they were meeting their needs. That people were improving their recovery, um, and that services were culturally responsive. So this, these next few slides kind of share more of the qualitative information, things we heard from discussion or from kind of the open ended survey questions. So the first one is about strengths. One of the things that we heard was that staff are really welcoming, caring and passionate. And work together to meet the needs of the community. This quote on the top right says the staff of behavioral health are truly outstanding. They work their darndest to meet and exceed the need, needs of their clients. We also heard that L C D H S leadership is approachable, engaged and innovative. Um, one of the things that we heard was that even as a small county, Lake really kind of stays up to date on new initiatives. And is actively finding ways to implement new and innovative projects and approaches. Um, and that the county has also been really responsive to kind of community needs and folks have noticed positive changes over the last few years. Um, service access is mixed, kind of as we said. So some people said that like a strength is. When services are available and easy to access and responsive. The quote on the bottom right says that they're accessible twenty four seven, are peer led and responsive and holistic. Another strength was creative outreach methods to engage the community members, like using social media. The outreach man has been really well received and kind of hosting a variety of community events. Um, another strength was the crisis services that. They're essential for the community and that these crisis services are seen as being responsive, helpful, effective, flexible and economical. Um, and then lastly, the L C B H S uses a peer led model that is effective at serving the community. I think we had a comment in the chat about uh, the peer support centers, but just kind of underscoring that peer support centers are really seen as essential to the community needs. Um, by helping clients find services and providing a space for clients to talk to the peers. All right, so on the next slide, we have gaps and persistent needs. One of the things that we heard was that suicide prevention is a gap. Um, and that there's a need for more funding and guidance in this area. Also substance use, that there are unmet substance use needs. In the continuum of care, like including the need for a detox center, more so we're living environments. And temporary housing solutions for those experiencing homelessness and substance use. Another gap or persistent need was kind of follow up or continued support. So hearing that there's a lack of follow up for clients. That maybe you're transitioning out of services and could benefit from continued support. To prevent future crises or challenges. So on the top right, we have this quote. Often people receive services or make it through a program but are not given the tools to succeed afterwards and often end up back in a similar situation or falling through the cracks. Also services for mild to moderate needs, um, and this kind of also folds into prevention that there just aren't enough providers kind of. For the folks who have more mild to moderate needs. And that these services really are preventative in nature and can prevent somebody from moving into like the more serious um, mental illness. And we have a quote on the bottom that says that I feel that L C B H, L C B H S struggles as most agencies do to prevent or address serious mental illness. Or substance use before they develop. And then moving over to the populations in need, one of the things we heard was young children and teens and transition age youth. So young children, especially like under five, not having the services that they need and that teens and tay kind of experience. Their own unique challenges, especially related to like bullying and things in school and social media. Also older adults that often they don't, they might not seek out help because of like maybe difficulty with navigating technology or transportation. They also might be more isolated. And might have more difficulty accessing services and then just kind of a lot, in particular, a lack of services for older adults who are also unhoused. That kind of moves us also into unhoused folks that just along with needing more housing in general, the unhoused population in particular, like. Really need behavioral health and basic need services kind of at the moment when they need support. So we see this quote on the right, while we've gone leaps and bounds with unhoused folks, being able to access services in that moment when people are ready to get help. It's a huge challenge and gap in our system. When somebody's ready for help and they don't qualify and they get another number, they give up. And then lastly, also looking at historically marginalized groups. So we heard a lot about. Like the LGBTQ plus population, the BIPOC, Black, Indigenous and people of color communities. That these groups um, really don't get enough support and in particular are feeling um, impacted by the current administration, which is increasing. Kind of anxiety and mental health needs and other needs. And then last slide, so some opportunities to address the system needs and challenges. So one of the things we heard was really kind of seeing if there's a way to increase the number of staff and providers to address the needs. That in particular, when there's not enough providers, it can limit capacity and result in wait lists. In particular, not enough peer and outreach staff. Improving service accessibility, so looking at if there's ways to kind of like improve or increase transportation options. Establishing more services and programs around the lake, offering later appointment times for those who work. Um, and then also just improving the responsiveness of existing programs. Sharing in program information um, across the community to continue to raise awareness of available services. But also around eligibility criteria that people may understand the services are available, but they might not understand the eligibility criteria. They might call about a service and then find that they're not eligible. Um, also improving cultural responsiveness across programs and services. And one of the ways to do that would be like diversifying leadership to kind of more accurately. Reflect community demographics, building cultural responsiveness of staff through educational efforts. Continuing to elevate the community voice by seeking feedback. And also making sure that community members are in decision making positions, like on the boards. And then also increasing outreach and engagement um, across the community and in particular among tribal communities. Improving collaboration um, across staff and across programs. So specifically, one of the things that we heard was that there's a need for more collaboration across staff that work in different service areas, like. One example would be collaboration with clinical staff and the peer support centers and crisis staff. And then lastly, finding ways to improve the service environment and experience to make sure that services do feel welcoming for everybody. And that they're equitably provided, um, and also include family support. So just making sure that kind of folks feel cared for and important in all interactions with staff. Making sure that kind of everybody is receiving the same level of care. And that also finding ways to kind of involve family members when appropriate, especially when things like medication are prescribed. So that's kind of an overview of the key findings. Again, if you want more information, it's available in the annual update. And I'm going to pass it over to Scott to talk about some of the program modifications. And also the things the county is doing to address some of these community needs that we just heard.
Thank you. So um, as far as programming, uh, what we are looking at is not doing a lot of big changes. Um, as we've repeatedly mentioned, this is the last year of this particular plan. Twenty three to twenty six. And um, we'll be moving to B H S A starting this coming year. And so we didn't want to make a lot of uh, changes uh, program wise um, as as a result. Because we'll be, we'll be doing some shifting with B H S A anyway. Um, and so, you know, the the changes that we were looking at. Had more to do with with uh. Just trying to be, you know, add some a little more efficiency um, as far as programming. That particularly goes into, as you see on the left hand column right there. Halfway down, it says trauma focused, co-occurring disorder screening and treatment. What we're doing with that because we just haven't had a lot of great utilization of that program. For whatever reason, it's, I mean, as a, as its own standing program. And that's because that work has been typically done with with um. Within our full service partnerships uh, program. Full service partnerships, um, you know, as you saw. Just in the funding wise, you know, almost a third of it um, is for um, F S P. And and uh, which pretty much is the dominant uh, treatment modality for for adult. Uh, team is is our full service partnership programming. And so it's probably just more efficient, we feel, just to kind of recognize it's already included within the full service partnerships. We do quite a bit of work with that, uh, you know, helping people um, address uh, co-occurring substance use issues. F S P dollars are used to to pay for, for example, for uh, substance use rehabilitation programs. To help help people, you know, address that, that particular disability. And so it's like I said, it's probably just more efficient just to to. You know, put it fold it within our our full service partnerships. So that's once, one programming change. The other really big programming change. Is um, we're going to do um, kind of a a small. Innovation project. Which we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about later, um, but it's, it's essentially. Adding, adding. Being able to have dashboards, data dashboards um, for our electronic health record to be able to. Understand and read the the data which is collected in our electronic health record, uh, just a little more quickly and efficiently. And, you know, tell, tell the story of what's happening um, with our services, just a little, little more clear. Um, and so um. That's a, that's like I said, a small, small amount, but it's. It's what we, what we are proposing that we do with some, some innovation funds. Um, I think I talked about all this already. Now, one of the things I also just want to emphasize is, um, you know, in the community. Planning or community assessment, needs assessment uh, process which which Jamie just went through, you know, she came up with a. A lot of really good ideas that people have mentioned in the community. And so um, those ideas that you've mentioned are shared with our entire department. A lot of them don't even, uh, aren't specific to this image itself, but just to, you know, kind of the department wide. Of how we as a department uh, can provide better services, improve our, our quality of services. To the community. And so we take those, those particular ideas and integrate them in existing, existing programs. And, you know, maybe even develop a, you know, within programs, develop a new uh, initiative. To to address those identified community needs. Um, and and this is a listing of um, some of those. You know, results of that feedback which the community has provided uh, into into our programming. Um, and so, you know, this is exactly, exactly why this community planning process is so important. To get the feedback from the community of what, you know, we can do to improve the services for the community. Um, I don't want to go through all of these because it would take, I could, I could literally spend another hour or so just talking about it. But if you, if you, you know, go through and look at this, you can, you can see. How how much we we do take that feedback. Respect that feedback and appreciate it and integrate it into what we do. If there's any questions on on that. There's a question, how is Paul Paulson's place going? Um, I can answer that real quickly. Uh, that's going really well. Um, after. Let's see, we originally got one time funding within M H S A. I think it was around two thousand nine. And so it took that long to develop a legitimate and realistic housing project. Particularly with the assistance with um, rural communities and housing development. Um, which specializes in taking a little bit of money and building on that to turn it into. Big enough to build an apartment complex. And so within that forty unit compartment apartment complex, which was built in Nice, uh, twenty units of that are dedicated toward. Toward uh, individuals that have uh, behavioral health needs. And so. Those apartments opened up at the, toward the beginning of this year. Behavioral health, our, our primary task was to help uh, uh, fill those, those units with with. With folks that are in need. Because we are members of the community, a continuum of care. And it's also a requirement of one of the grants that we used, um, we used a coordinated entry process. Uh, to to fill those units. Coordinated entry process is, um, it takes. Anyone that needs housing. And uh, does it, through a vulnerability assessment. Ranks, you know, those with the highest need and those with the highest need. Are the ones that to go into those, those apartments. And so um, that is the process we use to fill them. We've have, like I mentioned, all them all filled. We also have a staff person who is on site. To help with with the the twenty folks that are there, in addition to their treatment teams that they also have. Um, and so we're just super excited. I mean, I, I wish I could have more time to share you some of the stories. That I heard of people getting into the housing, you know, this is real, you know, permanent, ongoing housing that's their housing. And and uh, there is such excitement from people that have been homeless for years and years and years. And being able to, you know, have that experience of being able to get their, their own place. Anything else? Okay, well, I'll turn back over to Jamie, Paulina. For a second.
I think we're actually turning it right back to you.
It's all that's left, I don't think that's me again.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know, uh, could you um, ma- maybe take a moment and explain? You said that there was uh, one person that was uh, monitoring um, the twenty units. And there was also a team that was going in. Can you just be like, maybe explain briefly what the people are doing there? When you say monitoring or when they're there, like what is their, what are they looking for? How are they serving that the, those groups? What, what, what are they doing?
Sure, uh, so we have. You know, the folks that are, are there were, were already enrolled in in our treatment services. And they will continue to have their treatment teams, which have been working with them, continue to work with them as they live there. In addition to that, um, we have um, a peer support specialist. Who, who also goes there. During, during business hours and, you know, is able to. Uh, kind of troubleshoot any issues that come up um, for, for residents there. Particularly there, you know, any behavioral health residents. Helps with, you know, maybe connecting back to the treatment team. Um, there's also the intention of doing um, some onsite groups there. Uh, for example, helping people um, with with uh, daily living skills, you know, such as cooking and cleaning. That might uh, you know, kind of need that or just maybe some socialization groups. You know, connecting with others within, within that. And so there, and they also act as a, to go between, you know, with, with the actual apartment management there as well. Working with them hand in hand um, on. Uh, working with them hand in hand um on issues that are within that, that community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So uh for our budget request, um, kind of wanted to talk a little bit about um the funding. We talked, you know, Jamie did a, a great job of kind of summarizing how the funding is provided, you know, what percentages we receive and what uh, how the percentage it's supposed to be used for. I want to kind of mention here um the overall funding for the state and for that we receive um in, in Lake County. Some of this is actual twenty-three, twenty-four, that's actually what was, was, was uh provided. And um then twenty-five, twenty-six is, is almost up, so I was able to do a fairly decent estimate of what overall we'll end up receiving for, for this year. And then uh twenty-six, twenty-seven is um an estimated, um, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five is, we almost have received all of it. Twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven are estimated based on state estimates of what they project. Um, what the tax revenues will be for those, those two years and um the funding that we receive. As you look at this, you can see um that it does tend to, to vary uh year to year. You know, with, with uh what, whatever, how the taxes happen to be working that year. Sometimes, for example, they'll, they'll delay tax and taxes, collecting taxes um due to um, you know, wildfires or, or, you know, something like that, that, that happens, some natural disaster. Um, and so they, you know, that affects how they collect taxes and what taxes that they receive. And so it varies year to year. And so, you know, making, making a um, a budget particularly a, you know, projecting a budget um would seem to be challenging to do that. And so our philosophy has always been kind of to, you know, do kind of a mid-range budget. Because the nice thing about this, I mean, you know, although there's some volatility in this, in being able to collect taxes. Um, we do have five years to spend a given year in, in that we receive. And so, for example, in twenty-five, twenty-six, it says that Lake County will receive five point one million dollars projected. And, but we actually have five years to, to spend that uh, that, that funding. Um, and so that can, you know, we can, we can use that to our advantage to, to make up for lean years um when we have higher years. Um, and so that's why we try and, you know, do kind of a mid-range budget, take it into account that the revenues will, will be going up, up and down. Um, this is what we, we talked about before, that Jamie so, so clearly, I think, described. Seventy-six percent, the largest portion goes to, to uh CSS communities, services and supports. Um, of which that fifty percent of that CSS has to be dedicated toward FSP. Um, then we also uh within that, there's, there's what's called outreach and engagement and general service delivery, which make up the other fifty percent. And that's sort of, those are the things that we use with our, with our um uh wellness centers and some of our contracted programs that we do, along with PIPI is twenty percent. And then innovation is five, five percent. Also within CSS, worth mentioning is um we do have the, the option, which we have always taken advantage of, of using twenty percent of that for, for cap facilities and technological needs and workforce education and training. Which is, and here is, here is our budget for, for this year that we're, that we're looking at, uh based on what we would be receiving. As you can see, it's eight million dollars, eight point four, five. And um, say, well, you know, you only get five point one from the state. And the reason that we're able to have it at this level is because uh the five years we have to spend previous amounts of money. So we, we always uh don't uh expend as much in our, in our allocation as we receive. So it's carried forward year, year to year. So this is based on, you know, everything that has previously been carried forward as well as what we will be receiving this year. If that makes sense. Hopefully that makes sense. This talks about our annual revenue and expenditure report. Um, if you are interested in actually, I remember I, I did mention that we typically underspend our budgets. I guess we're, we're fiscally conservative about that. Um, and you can read um how we've spent our money in our annual revenue and expenditure report, um, which is both on, on our website. Um, you know, the last completed year was twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we also have previous years on there, and those are also submitted to the state uh to demonstrate how we are using the AMHSA funding. Hey, any, any uh, oh, I guess we're going to the next steps, okay. Next steps.
We can also open it up for questions, but we will be having our public comment period very shortly. All right, I'll quickly go through next steps and thank you Scott for going through program modifications and budget. All right, so our next steps um after this public hearing is we're going to finalize the annual update with public comments. So today marks the ending of the public comment period, and we're going to have a portion next where we can have a verbal, open, public comment period during the meeting. Um, once that is over, we'll finalize the annual update based on those comments. Um, Lake County Behavioral Health will then present the annual update to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And then they will submit the annual update to the state or to the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission. So we're right at the tail end of this.
As well as Department of Health, Healthcare Services.
Yes, as well as DHCS, thank you. All right, so we are going to move into our public comment portion of this meeting. We have about, I think, a little over half an hour, so we have plenty of time. If you have a public comment um on the annual update, anything that was presented today, please raise your hand virtually or in person. Um, and if you would prefer to use the chat, that is fine too. We can um definitely read aloud any chat public comments. Um, to speak over the phone, just as a reminder, if anyone is joining via phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star five and unmute by pressing star six. We ask, just with our shortened amount of time, we ask that everyone keep their comments to about three minutes if possible, but um, I know, feel free to, um, yeah, if you need to take more time, that's okay too. But all right, so um, let's see, it looks like we have two hands raised. Um, I think uh Meghan or the, the Peer Support Center, the Circle of Native Minds, feel free to come off mute.
All right. Uh, thank you so much for taking my question. I did arrive a little late because I'm working late uh to cover um a, a Native American event this evening. Um, so I may have missed this uh, this answer. Uh, but I wanted to know if you could elaborate just a tiny bit. Uh, my question is about the Native American peer counseling. I know we have a lot of Native Americans throughout the whole county. Um, not just, this center is not the only place where we do peer counseling um or peer support. So I wanted to know, um, it says the Community Services uh and Supports Native American Peer Counseling. Is there like a separate funding for the um Native American Peer Counseling? Or is this in the same funding, the same report, and the services um apply under that same umbrella?
No, uh, actually, that's a, that's its own program within CSS. If, if you're familiar with the Circle of Native Minds, um, we do have um an advisory group that's there. Um, it's made up of elders, it's called the Pathfinder's Group. And um they are in the process of developing um uh peer support, particularly for, for youth um to, to address uh tribal, tribal youth concerns, particularly, particularly uh risk of suicide and substance abuse. Um, and so that is an ongoing program that they have been developing. And uh we had set aside money specifically for that.
Hello, I would like to also clarify that uh DHCS has just issued uh the availability of traditional healer and natural healer benefits. Um, I've put a link in the chat where you can view that, and our department is actively working with community-based organizations to roll out this benefit and are exploring how that intersects with current uh tribal needs.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, we're going to move to Denise. I see your hand is raised.
Hello. Yeah, so um I was just, you know, watching as we were going through and almost in every area. I, I'm really concerned about, um, I think I just probably got scared a little bit about the peer centers because since I've started my connections program, I can tell you how many, I, I'm probably right around thirty-three older adults that we have helped in um like in major crisis situation, I think the older adult population is very underserved. What I have found in working this program, the connections program is this is for lonely and isolating adults. So most of the older adult population that can get out to the senior centers and can do all of that, those aren't the major referrals with detriment. The major referrals with detriment are coming from, I would say eighty to eighty-eight percent are coming from these peer support centers, and we've ran into some pretty detrimental situations. Um, just for an example, a couple of things, um, one lady literally, I mean, we've seen abuse, of course, which we, which now is getting reported to APS, but the other thing is just seniors that are getting taken advantage of. Yesterday I went out on two um seniors getting taken advantage of because it's the fourth of the month and all of a sudden um their children that are using or whatever are coming home on the fourth, fifth and sixth of the month, and they'll take their cards and stuff. These are all little things that I'm seeing. And at eighty-eight percent of my referrals coming from these peer centers, and not so much the senior centers, because those seniors are actually um, they're able to get out and go to the senior centers and stuff. It really concerns me because I think we're finally hitting, I mean, I don't know where you guys were at before, but I feel like there's, we've put a little bit, just a little bit of a dent in the older adult population. And it's, there's really some really hardcore situations that I believe this connections program can um handle. And I, and I just want to say for everybody at the peer support centers, they're willing to go out with me. I mean, thi- this is uh feet on the ground, you know, so yeah, it really scares me about the peer support centers being quite, you know, losing the funding for them. So my vote would be for keeping the peer support centers. And that's all I have. Thank you guys so much. Great presentation, very.
Thanks Denise, and well, as, as described earlier, we'll be addressing that uh in our upcoming community, community meetings.
Um, there was a question in the chat in between those two uh raised hands. Uh, Allison asked, for what purposes do we hold back money?
Hold back money with?
I think, I think that's referring to the um, when, when you were speaking about the carryover each year of funding, like we, we don't expend all of the funding every year. I think, I, I think that's what the question's referring to. It was a couple minutes ago that it popped up.
Okay, if I understand correctly, then what, what I mean by that is, is um you know, we, we provide a budget, it's, you know, like I said, it's carried over, we use the, the previous money that's carried over from um that we haven't spent previous year. And that kind of inflates our, our, our budget. It looks like, you know, we have, it, it basically our budget says the funding that we have available for not only this year, but what's left over from the last five years. It's not that we don't um hold any money back, it's just that um we don't um spend all that money in one place, that one year either. We, we take advantage of that, that five years uh so that we can, you know, make sure we get, we get through any lean years of, of allocations as well. But we, the budget accounts for the funding that, that still exists.
Thank you, Scott. Allison says, thank you for the explanation. I also wanted to read aloud, um Stacy put in the chat. I would like to recognize how wonderful the native-focused services are at Circle of Native Minds have been for my family who utilizes them. They have been a key in the, in his successful navigation of his behavioral health issues.
It's great. Thanks, Stacy.
I will now bring it back to the Circle of Native Minds.
Perfect. We actually have two uh folks who wanted to comment. So sir, I think you raised your hand first. Did you want to?
Okay, yes, I know.
Okay, absolutely. Go right ahead.
My name is David Rollins, and I just moved to Lake County like a year ago. And the circle's helping me uh manage. And I was wondering, I've seen a pamphlet right here, and it said Lake County ranked amongst the least healthy, fifty-six of fifty-eight counties. So why are we ranked so low? And how can we take a better make it healthier?
So I, I don't know, uh, Scott, or if anybody else has anything else they want to say, I can definitely uh, that's a very true fa- uh fact. Unfortunately, we can definitely touch bases that side of this meeting, so we can kind of talk a little bit more about it. There are definitely a lot of efforts that we're trying in the community, not just behavioral health, but overall. Um, so that's a really good question, and it's a broader discussion, I think, than just the three minute, but we can definitely talk some more.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
So that, that, that's one, just mention real quick, that, that was um Meghan Morgan, who, who just answered that question. She's our community liaison that we have. Um, it does, you know, outreach and to, to help the, the community understand what we do as a department and we get feedback, you know, kind of like we, we do for AMHSA um for the entire department. So she's a great resource uh person to, to be in touch with.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Janet, and I'm concerned uh when you say there's going to be maybe even a senior program cut out. Are you talking about Denise Brady's Connection, which is wonderful, wonderful? Or are you talking about Konokta Senior Support, which has operated probably twenty-five years? So I'm curious which one you're talking about. And I'd also like to say we are getting quite a few calls for people who are taking care of Alzheimer's, uh heart care or what have you, for being inundated. We cannot take Alzheimer's, but guess what? You're sending us homeless Alzheimer's, we're taking care of it. We're on the front lines of heavy cases, but we're taking it. Thank you.
Right. Um what we'll be doing, as I mentioned, we'll be having further community planning meetings uh coming up in, in the future. Well, we'll talk about, you know, this, this thirty percent that needs to be dedicated toward housing. Um, we will also um, you know, have, have contingency plans if, if we do have to do that route, or that's what the community wants. And part of that will be community discussions of prioritizing programming uh to determine what would be cut and what maybe it could eat by, you know, there'll, there'll have to be further discussions. Like I said, that's that's why we are primarily interested or at least aware that thirty percent housing is would 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 have a pretty significant impact on on existing programming.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? Feel free to raise your hand or put it into the chat. Oh, yes, Megan.
Sorry, I think we dropped one more.
I just had one, I was, my mom died at that reaction. I have to, right now, it's, if there was not the Peer Support Center like here, there wouldn't really be, I mean, there would be no place I could go. Well, and including, including all of the certain people that are supposed to be helping like the shelters, all these other places, like I can't, I can't even get into that shit right now. It was just, it may criminal be homeless, I can't get into a homeless. Yeah, so if there's people homeless, yeah.
Man, one thing, thank you. I, yeah, we have a public comment. Oh, I just want to say that, I just want to add, I don't know if this is, I just want to say that lately, it's been, well, this year, it's been huge with the recent budget funding cut, how everybody has come together daily, weekly. The peers, they're showing up, they're coming in, they're they're bringing whatever they have, sharing it with others. It's just, it's the peer-to-peer community is just so much stronger right now. And they know that the funding has been cut. And they have actually stepped up. They have just been here every day. They have been in so much more of a support system than I ever thought. And I mean, I just, I, there's so many peers here that I've, that, you know, daily now that are just stepping up, that are like helping each other. It's amazing. And I just wanted to throw that in there. Any more public comment?
I also wanted to say, Megan, the first man who was speaking, I had a hard time hearing him. Would he be open to repeating himself or providing a summary?
You can also stand up here. Yeah, we're going to have him come a little closer so that you can hear.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say that I have, I've been homeless since I, since my mom died. I had a rescue, that, and about a year and a half, two years. And I didn't have these people here, like, I mean, you know, since they've been, I'm not a big fan of the administration because like you may be, you know, they used to make criminals be homeless, but then didn't provide enough the the resources to then put people in homes. It seems like, because I, you know, I can't get in homeless shelters now. Or I can, these people then, still are there. And it's very supportive. So there's probably no place I have to go, including the shelters and all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I see there's a question in the chat from Henry. Will we continue providing LGBT inclusive care as a department?
Yes. So I want to be affirmed. Hello, this is Director Jones. I want to clarify, Planned Parenthood is their own entity, right? They do physical healthcare and we provide linkages to that. However, as far as being culturally responsive, humble, competent, and serving and meeting the needs of our LGBTQI2SpiritPlus individuals, the acronym becomes more inclusive by the year. We continue to have many initiatives, including, I want to highlight, I believe there's a Pride Fair this Saturday, which we are all participating in as a community. We do fun cultural activities related to the LGBTQ+2Spirit Group. And the state of California is also very aligned on continuing to provide inclusive and culturally responsive care to every individual, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender.
Yeah, just like to maybe do a shout out to our TAE, that's Peer Support Center, who works with the TAE population. That's the harbor on the main. They 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 do a support group for youth who who fit into that that population, which is great. Really, really proud that they do that. That's a very vulnerable population. And so that's a, that's a service that's greatly, greatly needed.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have our Pride Prom coming up, June fourteenth. And we also provide LGBTQ Peer Support Group for TAE youth as well as a gender-affirming clothing closet. Yeah. Thanks for the shout out.
Amazing. Thank you all. I think I also saw a hand raised, but then went back down. But I'm seeing some chats. So Kimberly says, thank you, LCBH, and Raven, exactly what I was going to say.
Yep, I put my hand down, so, ditto. Thank you.
Awesome. And there's also a flyer in the chat for the Lake County Pride Health Fair, I believe. So check that out. And I see Megan at the Circle of Native Minds. Feel free to come off mute.
Thank you so much. We have another question or a comment from Megan.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I was wondering, the behavioral health, correct? Yeah, LCBHS. Is that a reason why Lake County is lower on the list than most places? And you guys are helping that, or?
So I'll.
Is that a big issue for ranking of Lake County as lower on the list?
Oh, you mean like with the health rankings and, okay.
And the health that they're given.
Yeah.
To give behavioral health back up.
So I will make a comment and say that we do have high health disparities in this county. And that includes behavioral health, so that's mental health and substance use. We have high rates of substance use in this county. That is a little separate than, I think, what we're talking about right now. But we, it is all part of that, absolutely. So part of the behavioral health, mental health is just as important. Physical health is part of our kind of motto. So that's where behavioral health comes in. And we're definitely trying to impact those rankings the best we can, working with other partners in our community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I'd also say that Lake County has probably, well, not probably, has a higher poverty rate. And with higher poverty comes usually typically more health issues to go hand in hand, unfortunately. And so that's, that's a big, that's a big piece of it.
Hey. Thank you all. We still have time for more comments. So feel free to raise your hand or enter it in the chat as well. I see Timothy, your hand's raised. Feel free to come off mute.
So we have basically an option to opt out of how the budget could be changed with regards to thirty percent towards housing. We have the option to opt out of that, possibly. I guess the question I have for you is, because I'm relatively new and just kind of like understanding and going for presentation and learning, what are the benefits you would see from if you were to do, go with that new level of budgeting? Is there any benefits you would see? Or do you see that as more cons than anything else?
I kind of wonder if we shouldn't save this because it's going to birdwalk away from our main topic, which is the existing iteration, the revision of the plan. I think, Tim, though, we're going to specifically address that in the next upcoming meetings. Like, we're going to spend all of our time probably talking about that because we all need to have a very clear awareness of what the, what programs are at risk for being eliminated that have no other identified funding sources, right? That's a big consideration for the community. And we need to spend a lot of time talking about that. So I don't want to shove it into the last fifteen minutes.
Totally, we'll understand.
Yeah, I, you know, the the main idea of introducing this or reintroducing this again, talking about it, because also, not only I want to state where we are with the current plan, but also I want the community to start thinking about future iterations because they are significant. And 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 so I appreciate that question, Tim, and the other questions that Denise and others have brought up. These are significant things that we will have to address upcoming. And so I want, I want to get the community already, you know, and, you know, kind of to to do that. Meanwhile, we do need to close out this particular plan, this three-year plan with this last year. At the same time, looking forward to to the future.
Thank you, Timothy, for your question. I'm also seeing, so Allison posted, are we still offering Narcan? And Elise confirmed, yes. Allison said, great. And then we just received a comment from Wendy. I may have missed this being said, but when is the deadline to request the opt-out? Scott, would you like to?
Yeah, I mentioned that 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 will, that will be, we'll be making that application with our rough draft of our plan next, next March.
Awesome. All right, Megan at the Pierce, or at the Circle of Native, Native Minds, feel free to come off mute.
Okay.
I am Mountain, and I'm a Peer Support Specialist here at, for Lake County Behavioral Health, basically working out of the Circle of Native Minds. On the comment, is there Narcan? Yes, and that's probably one of the only things I have in my van today, in my outreach van. And I drive around, it's probably one of the only things I have abundance of to give away at this point. We definitely need, need funding for water and and all the other stuff that we give out. But if you see the van, wave me down if you need me. Because we have plenty of Narcan, a lot of that, that we do have. But and socks, we have a lot of socks. But for other things, that's a whole different issue other than that. But the van is still out there. We do drive around, but at this point, we don't have much other than Narcan and socks. So thank you.
All right, we services dude, you know, what Mountain does, he goes, he goes out there, connects with those, you know, doing a lot of street outreach. We do have brochures that we pass out. We do help people, linkages, help them find services and, you know, let them know what services are are even available, including housing services. That's one of the the big things that we we address. So the the Outreach Van does does quite a bit.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to pass it over to Denise. Feel free to come off mute.
So I might have missed this too, but I noticed Ms. Wendy said that she was wondering the deadline. And you said March of twenty twenty-six. This doesn't mean that our peer supporter, our peer support centers are going away this year, right?
No, no, not at all, not even close.
Okay.
Yeah, this this current, that this current, this current, yeah, that's, I guess that's the danger of bringing up, you know, the future. If you, if you review, you know, this this current plan, Peer Support Centers are are fully funded through to the rest of of this year.
Thank you.
Through 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 twenty twenty-six.
Great.
Great. Good clarifying question. All right, it looks like Wendy just chatted in. Where does the parent partner sit in all of this?
I'm not sure what the question is, other than that we do have a parent partner, which is great. Under Peers, Peer Centers, yes, the, well, Wendy, do you want to talk about the peer, what what you do?
Yes, so I am a parent partner, and I am housed at the Peer Support Center, Lavos, in Clear Lake. So I was just curious, so if this change, you know, if it, if the exemption doesn't go through, would it, how would it affect the parent partner piece? Because I am housed at the Peer Support Center. But I'm not sure if that is where my program lies or if it's in another area. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I see one coming up on Motherwise, too. So as I kind of mentioned earlier, we we haven't made any kind of decisions or anything like that about how we're going to do funding if if we have to do that thirty percent housing.
Right, right.
No, no decisions have been made at all, at all.
Oh, I understand that. No, I, I.
And and so, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, lose a lot of sleep over it. Because, you know, one, we're, we're really anxious to get that thirty percent exemption. We'll have to run that through our community first, want to make sure the community is on board in that, too. But that's, that's, you know, one of our our stated ideals that we're looking for. Beyond that, you know, we we will have to, you know, receive feedback from the community as far as, you know, what, you know, how to prioritize our programming, as we always do, with MHSA plan that we have. And so, you know, this, this isn't something that's, will be, will be just done, you know, in Elise's office late at night or something like that. This is, you know, going to be a very transparent process of how we're, we're going to address what we're, you know, what this, what this department does.
Perfect.
Elise, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? Okay. So, like I said, I only bring up this thirty percent housing thing just to focus on, you know, where we will be going in the future. Primary, you know, what we're doing is is wrapping up this plan. But also want to make sure that, you know, as we're wrapping up this plan, we're thinking about the next plan, too. Because that's the next thing that we'll be, we're doing. And the next plan is going to be significantly different than the current plan. You know, I mean, it's that thirty percent housing is only one of the different, you know, changes that are, that are going to affect.
Awesome. Thank you, Wendy and Scott. Looks like, oh, Allison asked, what does the Motherwise program do? And Patty responded, postpartum depression screening and support, among other supports to mothers of Lake County. And Patty also called out that there are also program descriptions for MHSA-funded programs available on the Lake County MHSA webpage. And she linked it there for folks to view.
It's a great program. We're very proud of it.
So it looks like we have about two more minutes for public comment before we move forward. I just saw Megan. Feel free to come off mute.
We have one more question.
Okay.
Is there any help for physical?
Yeah, let's, we'll touch bases as soon as we're done with this meeting. And then I think we can try and work on some referrals and get, get some.
Okay, physical help is just.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any comments in our last minute? Feel free to put them in the, in the chat or raise your hand. And also, if any come up outside of this meeting today, you can email them to Scott as well. Today is the last day.
One thing I wanted to touch on, actually going to ask, and we put Elise on the spot to talk a little bit about, but I was reminded, as we were going through the discussion earlier of, you know, Proposition One and about the bond measures that accompanied it. And and, you know, for, for basically for residential treatment and for housing. And, you know, that's, that's across the state. And maybe Elise and I, if you want to talk. And, you know, that's, that's across the state and maybe, Elise, I don't know if you want to talk about how Lake County's been able to benefit from that.
Yes, thank you, Scott. I am pleased to announce that Lake County Behavioral Health Services applied for a behavioral health continuum infrastructure bond grant for the expansion and revitalization of our Clear Lake Clinic. Those of you who have been a visitor to or work out of our Clear Lake Clinic are probably very aware of its sorry state of disrepair and grossness. And so I'm pleased to report that we were awarded a grant of 7.7 million to add new treatment group rooms as well as 22 new office spaces for both substance use disorder treatment slots as well as mental health services. And we anticipate beginning construction in the fall. There's also another project submitted by a community partner. And I'm waiting for the ink to dry on that, but it is very likely that we will also see a award for the construction of a, I want to say 16-bed mental health rehabilitation center. This is an inpatient center that is also duly certified as an ASAM Level 3.7 facility, which means it's able to support medically assisted detox within that milieu. So more to come about that. And we will soon be issuing our official press releases. But again, wanted to wait for the ink to dry. However, I do feel confident enough in our progress to announce our award.
Great, thank you.
Incredible. I resonate with Stacy's comment giving me goosebumps. Congratulations. Very exciting. And Wendy says, "Wow, good things are coming." Oh, these are so sweet. Thank you. Thank you both for that update. All right, with our last three minutes, we are going to wrap up. But as I said before, if there are public comments that were not set in this meeting or you would prefer to keep for later, you can email them to Scott today. Today is the last day for public comment. And so we just want to make sure everyone is aware. All right. Perfect. Patty put Scott's email in the chat. Okay, for the end of our meeting, we would love to hear how you all thought the meeting went. If you have a moment, we would really appreciate if you would fill out our feedback survey. The QR code is on the screen if you have your phone and can scan it. The link is in the chat. It should be three questions, I believe. And if you have any additional questions on the Behavioral Health Services Act, there is a question on the survey where you can list any questions you have about it or any additional comments you have. So if you have a moment and you are able, please feel free to fill it out. There's also paper feedback forms at the Peer Support Centers if you are attending in person. And I will just linger on this slide for a moment so people can scan that QR code. So I'm gonna pass it back to you, Scott and Stacy, to end the meeting.
Great. Just want to thank everyone for, for being here. You know, one of the great things I really like about MHSA, you know, when it was passed as a proposition back in 2004, it was, it was developed as a grassroots initiative. You know, it, it, it wasn't something that the legislature came up with. It was something that, you know, family members and clients and providers had come up with and, you know, did a, did a petition to, to enact it. You know, it's, it's a, it's, you know, because it's very community-based like that, that's why we do this. Because MHSA itself is founded on, on working with the community, being transparent, getting that community feedback. And so, you know, you being here and participating in that is extremely valuable. Not only is it a necessity, but it really helps guide what we're doing. And so I just want to, you know, really offer my thanks for, for you being here again. And, and the feedback that you've provided. And we look forward to, to in, in, in the future, your continued involvement because we're gonna need you in the future as well.
So, hi, Stacy. So I just want to mention how excited I am just since I joined our Behavioral Health Advisory Board at the changes that I'm seeing as a whole under Elise's direction and with all of you that are actually working for behavioral health as well. It's been really exciting to watch this evolution of more client-focused services. And I'd like everyone, to thank everyone for joining us today at our meeting. And a quick plug, so we still have a couple of seats available on our Behavioral Health Advisory Board. It's only an hour a month here at Circle of Native Minds. And I would like to reach out if there's any community members that are attending this meeting, that we would love to have you. It's a pretty easy process to join us. We also are in desperate need of a youth member, from 18 to 26, I believe. If anyone has a family member that's been, has utilized mental health services or is interested in, in mental health in general, or behavioral health, I'm sorry, please send them our way. And they can reach out to me or Elise, or not Elise, sorry, Megan. So, yeah, thank you all for coming today.
Thank you for, Behavioral Health Advisory Board for hosting this. We appreciate you. I remember there was a day when we didn't have a board to, to be able to host this. So it's great that you are up and fully functional and, and, and running and, and doing what you do. So thank you again for, for hosting us.
Hi, that marks the end of our meeting. And from RDA, we also are very grateful that you all joined us today. And I hope everyone has a beautiful rest of their day and week. Thank you.
Thank you.